Join me for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is very important that we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody recording the meeting in the public? I can judge them. Are you doing roll call, Mr. Boyer? Or do I do roll call?
I am doing roll call. And I'm not doing this job well.
It all falls apart when Mr. Boyer goes away. It's just what happens.
So if I make any mistakes, please let me know. But roll call, Mrs. Varenza?
Here.
Mr. Hershey?
Here.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Here.
Mrs. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Pottinger?
Here.
Mr. Redder?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Waxley? It's like eight in the morning.
Thank you. Welcome to our visitors today. Welcome to everybody. Good to see so many people. Wow, we're a full house, right? Upcoming meetings. We have a finance and budget workshop October 11th at 5:30. That's tomorrow. We have a school board business meeting October 23rd at 6 o'clock. And an executive session will be held following this meeting regarding legal and personnel matters. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move to approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following minutes. September 11, 2023, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Do I have motion? Second?
Second.
I would like to do my voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Liaison reports. Curriculum is this way, so you want to take a reading? Okay, well, Dr. Woodard is doing curriculum today, so that's good. Facilities, Mrs. Phillips, anything to report?
Not really, because we had our facilities workshop moved into our committee of the whole last month. And I guess coming in our next October meeting, we're going to be having a construction update, so.
But we do know that the fences are up at the Hill Building. That's big progress. Finance, Mr. Pottinger?
I met with Mr. Boyer briefly at a liaison state meeting tomorrow, so if you can join us, obviously, feel free to. Nothing major on each end, but there's a fair number of things, but nothing all that significant. But obviously, it's all significant, but nothing out of the ordinary, I should say.
Great. We're going to move on to curriculum development process review by Dr. Woodard.
Well, good evening, everyone. So just so you're aware, we'll kind of keep this moving. I don't want to bore you to death with lots and lots of details about curriculum development, although it's exciting work. But I thought, you know, it's not, I don't think it's a topic that we really have shared with the entire board about the process and how we determine what courses are written, what are revised, et cetera. So I met with Mrs. Kuhn last month and, you know, tried, we certainly tried to share some of this information with her. And Mrs. Kuhn said, so this is really good for everybody to hear. And so I said, all right. So it's not flashy, but at the same time, hopefully, you'll find it informative. And so I have copied some documents at your table, at your seat. And if we just are kind of displaying just a little bit of a sampling on the wall as well. But let me share by saying that you'll notice this document that is, again, displayed, is really the curriculum writing plan. And it's updated on a fairly regular basis, minimally annually. But it is the same schedule that really was created and originated by my predecessor. And so you have information that goes, you know, back to 2020. However, I really, you know, it really originated back in 2016. And so typically, what happens is teachers are provided 40 hours to work on curriculum writing for a full year course. So that work is expected to be done outside of the traditional teacher for work day. Okay, as part of the collective bargaining agreement. Now, the question is, how do we determine what courses are actually time and in need of renewal and update? So you'll see this lengthy list, and again, I took pages five on, but there were multiple pages prior, but you kind of get the drift here. There are secondary courses that are listed. I meet with the department chairs in the wintertime. So the department chairs for science and social studies and, you know, the art department chair and the music, et cetera. And we talk about how long it's been since certain courses have been updated. So maybe instructional resources have been newer, so we need to update materials regarding the curriculum. Perhaps we've created new courses, and you can see that as you page through. For instance, we have the driver education course this year. And so also, what's done here that's a little bit more unique than other districts? We typically, typically, I said, run a course for a full year or a full semester, if it's a semester course, before actually writing the document that goes along. Because we kind of want to test out some of the instructional resources. We want to test out the pacing, we want to test out, you know, again, making sure that we have adherence to standards and expectations, et cetera. The sequencing of the course. And so even though we're running driver education right now, or we're running coaching and officiating, we won't start working on that official document until next June. And teachers are given a full year to create that document. So if it's, again, a full year course, then you're given 40 hours at the professional rate in which to do so. There is a training that I hold prior to doing that with all teachers annually to make sure they understand the document, the template, which I'm going to share with you next, but also understand the expectations, you know, of the process. And then if it's a semester-long course, like a driver education, it's 20 hours, obviously, half of that, that they are given to create that document. Now, the curriculum is not like the daily lesson plan, all righty? But it provides an overall guideline for the course divided up into units. So in other words, it's not going to have every lesson for, you know, the full year, 180 lessons. But it really talks about the essential content, essential standards that are going to be addressed. Again, we'll dive into that a little bit more specifically in just a couple of minutes. But the key piece is, there's a lot of dialogue that occurs between myself and the department chairs to determine, oh, this course hasn't been updated in about six years, eight years. It's time to freshen it up a bit. And so that's really what we're working on. And I give credit to my predecessor, because prior to that, there were several courses that were never documented officially. So that's really where this real schedule kind of bottomed on for. And, you know, we certainly want teachers to be a part of this process. They are the boots on the ground. They are, you know, actually teaching the courses. So I want to supervise and work with them, but they are the ones that are obviously experts in their content area. So you'll see the Xs, really, I don't know why I use Xs, but that means they're accomplished. And so you'll note, there are a couple of issues with COVID that kind of things, how to get put on hold, et cetera. And a couple of different things that you'll notice if you look at the summer of 2023. It's dated in the summer of 2023. That means they started in June, but they really don't have to be finished until June of 2024. However, there are quite a few of those that are already finished. So a lot of teachers like to get things done throughout the summer, because that's the time that they have to really invest in it. But you'll also notice that math K to seven, for example. We talk a lot about math, a lot about curriculum revisions, new resources last year. I'm doing a little something different, because we're attacking it across K to seven. So in August, I brought all the math teachers who are representatives together. Two representatives per grade level, K through seven, were a part of that. We met in August. We went through a lot of expectations. I introduced the template. But we did a lot of, what does it mean to write curriculum, work with that group? And what does it mean to really, you know, utilize this as a resource, but also bring in other supplemental resources as well? We worked on that together for six hours in August. Then I put together for them a plan for the school year. So we are meeting again next week for two hours after school. That will be, we're all coming together. I think what's really beneficial in situations such as math and ELA is that you have second grade teachers working beside third grade teachers, working beside fourth grade teachers. That can be a challenge, because again, I said it has to be done after school hours, right? So we aligned every, you know, six weeks or so, six, eight weeks, we put a two-hour block where we're all coming together. In the meanwhile, there are those two people from each grade are getting together in the meanwhile to work on some of their own grade level specific work. And we'll come together, share out, and then have the opportunity to continue that work. And, you know, for instance, money. Money is a really popular skill in second and third grade. The Pennsylvania standard says you have to do it in a certain timeframe. Our actual math resource doesn't teach it till another timeframe. So we have to kind of triangulate all this information. Looking at our standards, what are the expectations? Looking at our resources, does it match? And that's why it's really helpful to have people in the same room, around the table, talking and comparing. Oh, do you expect kids to read the clock to an hour, half hour, or to the minute? Okay, in second grade, you expect this, and third grade, you expect that. So we want coherence across the curriculum. So that's why, you know, certainly, it's not done yet for math K to seven, because we're taking a kind of a longer approach and chunking it out through the year. It will be accomplished by looking at it, the end of March. We'll have everything, you know, math K to seven, new templates, all completed for our curriculum. So I think, you know, that's exciting. It's also a different approach, because typically, what happens and what has happened here in the district is, it's done in isolation. So, which you can understand a little bit more about in high school, when I might be the only teacher who teaches forensic science. And so I'm going to be the one that's responsible for that. But when you're dealing with six or even seven teachers teaching first grade math, you want to make sure that you're also getting time to get input from your grade level colleagues throughout. And so that's why I've structured that a little bit differently. So, you know, we're aiming to get through this. And you'll see, and you'll hear me talk probably in November, which is coming up really soon, when we talk about program of studies for next year. Now, I'm going to propose a new course, public speaking, which would be a dual enrollment course. And so we'll get started with that. When I said you typically work and run a course a full year prior to writing the curriculum, you'll say, but Missy, you have that listed this summer 2024, and you didn't write, you know, you haven't run it yet. Well, our teacher who is slated to teach that is moving forward. Like, she's really getting some things together and wants to work. And we are provided a syllabus from RAC, so that gives us really kind of a good start. So, you know, we try to be responsive and want to make sure that we're providing our teachers with what they need to be successful in running these courses. You'll also see summer of 2025, and this will fit more of a special, because we're planning to have it run in our program studies for next school year, a financial literacy course. So we have, due to our retirement this past school year, we kind of changed some courses that certain teachers teach. And so we took a look at the academic economics. And one of the teachers said, I think we can do a few different things with that. And I think we could dive in a little bit more to financial literacy. And I am totally on board. It goes along with our strategic plan initiatives, our, you know, our comp plan initiatives. And so you're going to see some, you know, a proposal to kind of rename that course. But I went ahead and put it in our plan down the road, because it will need to be rewritten as such. But we have some new resources that Mr. Boyer was generous enough to help us access just to try out this year. So there's some good stuff on the horizon. But again, that came about because a teacher came to me and said, can we talk about this, Missy? This is a good time. I know it wasn't in the original plan, but let's pilot a little something now before we get something officially approved. So really, this document isn't, you know, going to give you a whole lot, except I wanted to share with you how much work has really been done by our teachers over the past, you know, three, four years in the realm of curriculum development. We don't just let things, you know, go forever without retouching, touching them and revising them. And that's another thing that's a key piece. When I show with you the template, it's a Google Doc, which means it's manipulatable, right? So it can be changed, it can be freshened up, for lack of a better term. Years ago, you wrote curriculum, you printed it out hard copy, and you put it on a shelf. And it didn't come around again until six or eight years later. No one really looked at it, right? Now, the teachers have access to these documents, and you're going to see that they can make changes and suggestions to the learning plan as a result of potentially new resources or new ideas that come up along the way. So while we certainly want this curriculum to be on file, we also know that it can be a living, breathing document, which I think is really important. And it also makes it more user-friendly for our teachers, too. And a little bit easier. So when we have retirements or resignations, somebody can pick up the curriculum document, and it gives them a great skeleton and outline on which, you know, and how to formulate the actual lesson plans. So I think what we can do is probably just change it over to the actual template.
Can I check with you?
Oh, sure.
Is there, you know, when this started, when she initiated this, we had curriculum that hadn't been rewritten for 10-plus years.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, where's, is there a document that says, like, essentials of computer art one, the last time it was revised, and now it's revised here? And then I would also ask, is what's the goal? So driver education is a new class. They're going to, you know, write the curriculum. Is that like on a five-year basis, like every five years? Like, is there something like, with math, it's every three years, with English, it's this, with that? You know, how often, what's our goal for how often we rewrite curriculum?
So because it's a living, breathing document these days, I'm not going to specifically say it's got to be every six years or every eight years. But sometimes it also goes according to the resource, instructional resource we have. Although, remember, instructional resources aren't the curriculum. And that, that used to be the issue, like, you bought a math text, and the curriculum was a table of contents. That's not, we've got to be more responsive to our students than following the table of contents. But ideally, when I'm working with the department chairs, we're looking at five, six years and, you know, that's, and say, okay, this hasn't been touched for a while. But you're exactly right. Things haven't been touched since the end of the 90s, you know? And so just to get it on kind of a cycle. So realistically, you know, a year to try things out, the year to actually write it, and then, you know, three to four years of implementing it, making some tweaks, but not overhauls, and then it's time to look at it again, you know? So, and in some cases, you know, I'll have a teacher, you know, in history, nothing really needs to change right here. Or, you know, in math, for instance, not much needs to change, you know, our resources are good. So we decide, it doesn't have to be done there, but it's still kind of on the back burner as we at least had the discussion, you know, whether or not we need to, quote, overhaul it, rewrite the curriculum or not. But I feel like in the next year or two, we should be in a spot where we can move from there and have those discussions about every six years and just kind of keep the, you know, the schedule going that way. But it was a lot of catch-up for a while, so. So if we want to move over to the template, and so you'll see, I thought, because forensic science is something that we don't always think about, so I thought, let me pull, and this was just done this summer. And so you can change the document to the template, the other template, yeah. So if you take a look at unit one, and I'll talk to you, this is the template that I created. It's pretty similar to what had been used before. But through some of the curriculum writing sessions I've been at at the DCIU, I took some of those pieces and kind of created this template. The teachers, we've used it since I've been here. The teachers have been pretty pleased with it. Again, because they feel like it's not necessarily an opportunity to just rewrite the table of contents, but to really integrate different kinds of things together. And so what's important to realize is, for each course, this is a semester-long course. For each course, whether year or semester, we divide it up into units. And so you'll see that the title of this particular unit is forensic science and observation. And it takes about three weeks for that first unit to be taught and learned. Another key piece that I feel has to be a part of a unit plan are the content standards. So these are standards that are specifically science-based. They could be content skill, they could be practices, inquiry practices that are really important, especially with the new skill standards that we'll talk a lot about this year as well. So for every unit plan, no matter what subject area, you'll see the title of the unit, the timeframe, the content standards as well.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I don't really understand these content standards.
Okay.
Is that something that comes from the states?
So in the cases that are marked CC, those are our PA core standards. So this is telling us what students should know and be able to do as a result of instruction in this unit. Okay? So now, some of this that you're seeing, you're going to see here, if you read it really carefully, those are more practices, like the scientific method, et cetera, not necessarily, you know, fingerprinting or like unit three that I have here. And that's because with the new skill standards, those are the new science, technology, engineering, and environmental literacy sustainability standards? You did not, though. Those are the new science standards. So you have those content standards, like, what is an atom, what is a molecule, those kind of pieces. But you also have, how do I engage in a scientific experiment? How do I learn what scientific processes are? Those standards are as important as the content standards. And in fact, when the new assessments come out in 2025, 2026, a quarter of the assessments are going to be based on the practices, not even just the content. So we have to make sure that our kids engage in science. They do science. They don't just read about science. That's a whole other presentation. We'll probably come to you in the winter. And I'm working with teachers on that, starting at the end of this month. We're training, because science instruction is going to work totally different than it does now, especially at the K to five level. Because we're going to have a little scientist in our rooms. We're not going to just read about science. So those statements, you might say, Missy, that doesn't sound like a lot of forensic science content. But really, it's the practices in science. And no matter what kind of science content you're teaching, you have to give students the opportunity to engage in those practices, okay? But typically, you'll see that this, you know, a lot of the standards are what students need to know and be able to do in this unit. Another big section of our template that the teachers really have to think about and coordinate are those understandings, those big ideas. So you might say, okay, what are big ideas? They're those core concepts, core principles, theories related to a field of study. So in this case, related to forensic science and observation. What does it really mean? And so that's when you see, okay, we have to understand and teach kids that limitations, that they have limitations regarding their observations and their perceptions. That they, you know, that eyewitness testimony could have faults. So they're big ideas. They're not really specifics, but in general, we just need to make sure that kids understand that. We also have to make sure that we recognize the vocabulary. And oftentimes, that's content-related vocabulary. But here, again, because we're talking so much about the scientific method and observation, it's also about hypothesis and observation and making an opinion, and what does that really mean? So a lot of vocabulary that's going to be heavily addressed within this three-week unit. You know, you might hit upon it other times in the year, but specifically within this three-week unit, these are key vocabulary terms, okay, pertinent to that unit. Kind of connecting the big ideas, wow, what's this unit really about? What are these core theories and principles, are the essential questions. Not every essential question has a right or wrong answer. It really is supposed to be there to get kids to think. And so, you know, in this case, can you interview a witness and still get accurate information? Yeah, it depends. But having those conversations and talking about it is really, really important. That helps to drive some of what you do in the classroom. But then, there's also some essential questions that are strictly content-based. And if you don't know that, you're not going to be a good forensic scientist down the road. Meaning, what kinds of tools do forensic scientists use? We've got to instruct some of that, that kind of content as well. So typically, essential questions are kind of big, but oftentimes, too, they've got to make sure that you're building a foundational knowledge for kids to learn. So, remember, every unit, you have to go through all this, okay? And then in addition, here's the big stuff, the meaty stuff of this unit, knowledge and skills. What will students know and be able to do as a result of the unit? That's the knowledge stuff. The skills, what will they be able to do as a result of this unit? Kind of hands-on, right, making observations. You can see designing an experiment. These are things that the kids are expected to do. And also, you're going to notice I can statements. So we like to share I can statements with kids, because it makes it very explicit. I can describe the purpose of forensic science. I can determine which online sources are valid. Those are really important skills and pieces of knowledge that kids want and are expected to be able to do. We have to be clear with them, so that they know what it is they're supposed to do. So that, again, the teachers are putting all this essential information into this document. It's not a circular lesson plan, but it's going to guide what you do in the classroom for each lesson. And then if you kind of go to the next piece, I think it's really, really vital that our assessment aligns up with our knowledge and skills. So what is it that they have to do, and how am I assessing them on that? And so here, I like to make this a little bit clear, too. You're going to see there's a suggested box and a common or required box. So this is forensic science. Currently, Mrs. Knower is the only teacher who teaches this, okay? So you could argue, do you need a common assessment, because she's the only teacher teaching it? Common assessments come in handy when you think about third grade math, and every one of those third grade teachers gives the same assessment. That's really key, so that there's consistency, right? So even, again, very, very, very important when you have multiple teachers teaching the same class. But still, upstairs, in some classes, like an honors biology, we have, we have two teachers teaching honors biology. We want to make sure that there is some consistency there. So our bigger unit tests are going to be common assessments. But there are quizzes or formative assessments that go along that I may say, you know what? My kids need me to check how they're doing. I'm going to give them this quiz for that day, or I'm going to give them this activity. That's formative. That drives my instruction. That doesn't have to be common across both of us. Does that, is that understandable? So, you know, that's why we have some suggested assessments and some common and required assessments. You're going to mostly see those bigger unit tests under the common or in the case of the next unit, labs. We want to make sure that everybody who's learning about fingerprints engages in a fingerprint lab, right? Because you want some hands-on opportunities for everybody. So that's a required assessment. Another key piece is, not all assessments have to be test or quizzes. And so, you know, we talk about performance tasks. That's really a key for me. Whether it's, you know, writing an essay, or engaging in a presentation, or engaging in certain labs, those are great ways to show your learning, too. And so those are other assessments that are included in here. And I think that helps to round out whether or not the students can demonstrate their learning, okay? So we have the knowledge skills aligned to our assessments. And then obviously, what's really important that we have included here is the instructional resources for the teacher and also for, you know, students. So, you know, in this case, I know the teacher, you know, provides guided notes or makes adaptations per IEPs. It's not specific, but it reminds us the things that we need to do for students, as well as, you know, what am I using as a teacher? And in a lot of cases, we're pulling from a lot of different items, but we may have, you know, one primary resource with a couple of different supplemental resources as well. So it's important that, you know, that we include that in our template. The suggested learning plan is not required when I, when I ask teachers to engage in curriculum writing. It's suggested, but it's not required. These are, and Mrs. Knower, Ms. Knower did a wonderful job here. She included some really key activities that align to the standards and align to the skills, knowledge and skills that the students need to learn in this unit. And she went ahead and populated those with different activity ideas. Now, she may not teach this course next year, but the person here has a really great outline and some ideas on which to move and make that course his or her own, but still giving her a nice solid backbone. That's ultimately what we're after right here. And the teachers have told me multiple times, you know, this suggested learning plan? Hey, Missy, I know this was, you know, module one, we're done with module one now, but I added this. this. I'm like, that's great. You know, again, we want to use it. That's the whole basis of it. It's not something that, you know, we create these courses and we just go and be free to do whatever. Like, we want something to be guiding us, and that's the key piece. And these are our guides for that. And the more people use it, the more people add to it, I think, the better in the long run. So I gave you, and I'm not going to go through the second, what's really Unit 3, but I thought it was kind of a neat unit to share because it is the fingerprinting unit. So it's like a hands-on unit, and you can kind of see, you know, what it is students are expected, again, to know and be able to do, the different types of performance, very hands-on experiences. And I guess one thing I would just share is in the assessment piece and suggested, you saw my little key, F for formative, S for summative, and P for performance task. I said, performance tasks, those are those hands-on kind of experiences, be able to show what you know in a different way other than a test. But somebody might ask, what's a formative assessment? Formative assessment is really to help the teacher during instruction, understand where the students are in their learning. Because, so if you can remember, back when I was in school, I don't really remember having too many quizzes until the big test at the end. I got, you know, they taught, 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 and then it's a big test. Problem with that is, you're teaching, 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 you might not realize how my kids are learning or if they're not learning. So you want to do these like what I call dipstick measures. You know, checking in with kids, are they learning as we're going? And those are formative assessments. Me checking in, you know, daily with an exit ticket, or maybe every couple days with a little bit of a quiz, and maybe it counts towards the grade and maybe it doesn't. It's giving me information on how, you know, I need to change or alter my instruction based on what kids know. So formative assessment is key, and I talk to a lot of the new teachers, like, we're not going to just give a summative assessment, we're going to give a formative assessment too. That's why they're in here, because we want to remind teachers, it's not, you know, you don't just wait until the big test, you're trying to get dipstick measures along the way. So that really, that can help you drive your instruction. So just a note of, you know, the difference between formative, summative, kind of at the end, that we say, that's an autopsy. It's been done. What are you going to do about it? Now, formative is not an autopsy. I can do something about it, right? And make it better. So just a little clarification on that. But again, I thought, you know, because it's a great idea to share, I know it's like, you know, it's not really, but at the same time, I had to say, our teachers work really hard, and I think that's a key piece to really get that point across to everybody, that when you approve curriculum writing hours, there's a lot of thought, effort, energy that goes into creating the curriculum to really help students learn the very best they can. And so, that's kind of the foundation of it. So I don't know if anybody has any other questions or anything, but little note, insight into curriculum writing.
You go ahead. I know Dr. Witter's coming back in November to hit a little bigger topic, probably a larger stretch of time, digging into some of the assessment data. So five, a little longer block for curriculum as well.
I thought one thing we talked about was, when you do academic planning, and then there's an honors class, they really and truly should be two separate.
Yes, definitely, yep.
Which I thought was, you know, because it would be easy to just cop and say, oh, you know, class is a little more difficult, but it really should be a separate document.
Correct. So we run honors, you know, honors geometry, academic geometry. Believe it or not, academic geometry has to meet the state standards, honors geometry has to meet the state standards, but you should go beyond. And so, we're not saying, oh, you know, the state standards only need to be met in honors, we can quote dumb down the academic. Academic is still expected to meet those standards. But what are we doing? Not just pacing to make the difference between academic and honors, but how are we going in deeper? How are we moving, you know, into a little bit more higher-order thinking, or more application? And so, we do have courses whereby, you know, the academic version is different than the honors version, and therefore requires another set of 40 hours or another set of 20 hours to create those documents. So, thank you. Yeah, because this is an example of just one course. We don't have academic or honors or, you know, versions of forensic science, it's just an overall one level.
Maybe sometime next year, you could do 10 minutes on the standards, because that's, you know, like, just like where you find them.
10 minutes on the standards?
I don't know. Whatever you, you know, any kind of. Maybe, maybe next year, but like staff needs to feature, I don't think I have.
Well, I'll tell you what, we will be working on the steel standards, because that's the huge science initiative, so I can definitely incorporate a little bit of that and show you the state's, you know, warehouse of all the standards, because that's, you know, where we do a lot of our work and where we poll. But yeah, codification itself of standards, naming standards will take a long time. But what you need to know, I think it's important because that drives what we teach. You know, we have the freedom of flexibility on the how-to, but the what is driven by our standards, our core standards. So, you know, there's not a lot of flexibility with manipulating the content piece, because in some cases, there are tested subjects. And so, again, we've got to make sure that we are aligning our instruction with the expectations. But I'll gladly, you know, talk a little more of a deep dive into the PA's core standards.
Sure. Okay, and next time you present, if you could have a little more energy, we'd appreciate it.
No. I told you, it's not funny, but I enjoy this stuff.
More accurate than this was.
I know.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Witter.
Thank you. Yeah, so. I'll bet you're ready to take over for a good energetic.
It's hard to match that.
We'll switch gears, so thank you, Dr. Witter.
You got it.
Good luck to Mia.
Thanks, yep, again.
Well, we have our physician here, and just to remind the board members, we've had some changes in the past few years. This is year three of our agreement with Olivet at West Reading. We're very pleased with having that opportunity, not just during the school year, but also in the summer. So again, we've been outstanding partners together and really think that's provided a niche that we didn't have maybe previous, with some after-school programming for kids that are kind of in the middle of our school system. So I see a big group here today, we'll turn it over in a moment. You obviously know Dr. Babb here as well, and then from Olivet, we have Chris Winters, we have Cat Boyer, and Nick Philippi. So they are going to share a little bit tonight of an update, some things that Olivet is looking at and explain, and certainly entertain questions as we look to kind of hopefully continue this arrangement between the district and Olivet, and make sure it's here, not just for the short term, but hopefully here forever. So we'll turn it over to the Olivet team, and I know there's a PowerPoint that Mr. Aron has put up here for us. Who was yours?
Join me up there, can I?
Wherever you're comfortable.
They were your comfortable. If they're here with you, that's a good one.
Appreciate it. Good evening, gentlemen, Coranza, fellow board members, and Mr. Scobria. Next to me is Cat Boyer, she's our chief operating officer. On the other side is Nick Philippi, the YMSC grad, and myself. I'm Chris Winters. I actually graduated a year before Ral back at Central Path, so longtime YMSC community. You know, the biggest thing I can say as the CEO is thank you for being our partners. I mean, this has been a great relationship between us and YMSC School District, West Reading, to see those kids succeed and to see the energy and passion that Jamie Jimlesky, who is our director at that SOU, has for these kids and what she does during the school year and during the summer, is nothing short of amazing. But in order for Olivet to continue to support the children who need us the most, we need to look at 125 years and realize it's time that we have to make a model adjustment. Not to put Rachel on the spot, Rachel is our chairwoman of our board, has been particularly involved with us for nine years now and beyond. Her and her husband have been very huge partners of ours for a long time. But we're looking at the model and realizing that we need to make some changes, and we need to make some changes because the world's changed, and you guys know that better than anyone. Tonight, you are presenting with a model that allows us to serve more disadvantaged youth and students in your district more effectively, not only in the short term, but in the long term. At the core of this model is a plan that no child will ever be turned away from being an Olivet kid, but it changes the way we operate so we can serve not only children in YMSC community, but hopefully in the future will allow us to look at serving the needs of the youth of the community across Parks County. With that being said, please allow me to turn over our presentation to Cat Boyer and Nick Philippi, as they explain what we are respectfully proposing to the board.
Thank you, board members, Mr. Scobria, and thank you, Dr. Babb, for your continued support of our program. It's been an absolute pleasure since our inception in 2021, all the wonderful experiences our kids have had in the program, and myself personally getting to experience these with them, and to know them, it's been an absolute joy. It's really become, the program at West Reading has become their home away from home, I would say, and their family away from their family. And that's what we strive to do in all of the locations, and it's just been neat to see that, you know, here in a school-based setting, in, you know, that I'm in a lot of love, so really excited for that. The bonds that they form with one another with their staff members, I believe these will endure for, you know, many, many years to come and serve them well going forward. And I think this school year, we've seen that it's kind of come full circle in the sense that our, when we started in 2021, our fifth graders then have now moved on to the seventh grade, so they're out of West Reading, they're here, but they, the ones who live in the area around West Reading Elementary are coming back on a daily basis to hang out and be with the staff and participate in the program. So it's, it's stuck with them, and they're wanting to continue, they're wanting to continue to experience that. They've had a wide variety of wonderful experiences in our key program areas, healthy lifestyles, good character and citizenship building, and academic success. We started in the Spanish Club, and we just, the other day, identified who our president will be for this year, it's a young lady by the name of Belia, so we're very excited for that. Their flight football team last year took our Olivet intramural league by storm, primarily female too, took the league by storm, did a phenomenal job. They've built cardboard boats at our summer camp at our Blue Mountain Camp location, which we take the kids to during the summertime. They, we took the kids to on field trips to the 76ers last year, and one of the West Reading members got to go on the floor and high-five. Jane Tard, Joel and Beattie, so they were really, really excited about that as they came in on the high-flying tunnel.
That's where that picture is.
Yeah, that's where the picture is from. And then we had a number of the students that just spent last year participated in a chess tournament versus against, a little friendly competition against our Oak Brook Club, and they did a phenomenal job in our inaugural chess tournament that we hope to continue for years to come. So it's been a wonderful experience thus far, and we really hope to continue this partnership and see it grow.
Thank you. So I think Nick went ahead in the slides a little bit, but that's all good. So just a note about all the pictures that you're going to see, they're pictures of our West Reading members, so I love to see their, you know, smiling faces engaging in programs as we go through. But just to note, you know, I think Nick summed it up really well, but our mission is to enable all youth, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential. That's really what it comes down to. And we were founded in 1898, and we're celebrating our 125th anniversary as an organization this year, so we have a really rich history. We were one of the first clubs to band together with other clubs across the country to form what is now known as the Boys and Girls Club of America. So again, just some fun history for you. We can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And so Nick touched on a lot of our programs, and so we provide, you know, after-school and summer programs, but again, it's so much more than that. I actually just did a presentation for the United Way yesterday, and I talked about this idea that it takes a village to raise a child. I'm a mom myself, so that's very, I identify with that so much. And I think for a lot of the kids, we are the village, you know, we're the only place that's providing them with that positivity and that support and those experiences to help them grow. And as Nick mentioned, our programs focus on academic excellence, good character and citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. We also have, you know, we mentioned Jamie, who's our site director of West Reading. You know, all of our staff are so passionate, they love what they do, and really, really fortunate for that, because they provide such great support for our kids. And so we, they give a mirror, we typically serve about over 3,000 kids, ages six all the way up to 18. And we have five brick-and-mortar sites in the city of Reading. We have a satellite location, as we call it, which is our center for the arts club, which focuses on art and music programming that's in Reading, and then of course, the West Reading Elementary Site. Thank you. The next slide, please, thank you. So as Mr. Scobria mentioned, we launched West Reading back in 2021, and really, I think Jamie and the staff have just done a wonderful job in providing these kids with the Olivet experience. You know, they're not in a clubhouse, but they get all of the things that we offer at Olivet Boys and Girls Club. And I think what's been great, you know, this is one of our, this is our first school-based model that we've had as an organization. Jamie, I think, has done a really great job of building relationships in the school, you know, getting to know the teachers, and really understanding, you know, the students that come see her after school, you know, maybe some of the challenges that they're facing, and the extra, I mean, the academic support that they need. So I think, you know, that's something that we don't necessarily have at our other sites that I think Jamie has really excelled at through this partnership. And so currently, this past summer, our rate at West Reading and across our other sites was $50 a week for a full-day summer camp, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, you know, Monday through Friday. And then traditionally, we've charged for the school year a flat fee of $25 for the full school year. And this most current year with West Reading, we changed it slightly, we go to $10 a week, and we'll talk more about, you know, why we're making that shift a little bit. And then our average enrollment at the West Reading site is between, I would say, 40 to 50 kids, and then our average daily attendance, we're probably seeing 20 to 25 kids on a given day. Next slide. So, you know, Chris in the beginning really talked about sustainability, and, you know, that's something that we've talked a lot about as a leadership team, is, you know, how we can continue to sustain this program at West Reading, but all of our club locations. And what we're, our ultimate goal that we're talking about today is West Reading being our first licensed site for after-school and summer care for school-aged youth, and that would be going through the licensing process through the Department of Human Services. So that's our ultimate goal that we're talking about today. And the reason why is because it creates a pathway for us for sustainability. So when I think about it, you know, our historical model has been that we provide quality after-school and summer programming for free or at a greatly reduced cost. You know, we, of course, we have the rate that we charge, but we oftentimes have families that can't afford the $25, they can't afford the $50, and we don't want to turn them away, and so we welcome them in, you know, no charge to them. But again, that only goes so far in sustaining operations. So with the new proposed model and through licensing, what that allows us to do is provide, you know, the same quality program, but doing it at a rate that really reflects the value of what we're providing, while still financially supporting the families that need us most. So for us, it's a change in the model, but we're still staying true to our mission of serving the kids that need us. Thank you. So again, I talked about, you know, our business model and sustainability, so I just wanted to sort of provide an example of, for us at West Reading, you know, what it takes to run a program in a given year as far as expenses. So across the top, there's estimated expenses for the school year and also for the summer. And just not to go through every bullet point, but we can see that when we just consider that the staffing costs for a full-time site director and part-time staff to support her for a given year, we're looking at close to $100,000 to run the program. And what that does not include is, you know, things like transportation, to field trips, to the Reading Club Museum, it doesn't include program supplies, you know, the administrative support to run the program. And then when we compare that to, you know, our traditional membership fees of the one-time payment of $25, or the $50 weekly rate for summer camp, you can see that our total estimated revenue is about $10,000. So really, there's just, again, you can clearly see that there's, you know, with that price structure, we'll never cover the cost of what it takes to run the program. And that's where we really, that's where licensing came up as an opportunity to really shift this model, so we can cover more of our costs and continue to serve kids here and at all our other club locations. So again, as I mentioned, the overall goal is to, for West Reading to be our first site where we would become licensed. And just briefly, what is involved in that is we have to, you know, get licensed through the state through the Department of Human Services, and there is an application process that we have to go to, we submit paperwork to the state, and then I believe And then I believe that takes about 30 to 45 days for that application to get reviewed. And then we'll have an inspection of the facility where someone from the state will come and make sure that, you know, we have the appropriate paperwork in place. And then if we are successful in getting through that inspection, we get a provisional license for six months. And then after the six months, we get another inspection and ultimately we would get, you know, a certification for a full year. And then every single year we would get, you know, another inspection and review, you know, renewed for another year, so on and so forth. And, you know, what comes with licensing, because this is a process that any childcare center, any daycare has to go through, is there's a lot of regulations. And their real focus is on safety, of course, like any license center, they want to make sure the kids are safe, but they also want to make sure that it's a quality center so that the staff are trained appropriately. So, you know, there's a whole laundry list of regulations, but as I mentioned, it really focuses on staff qualifications. So for example, a director of a childcare center has to have a bachelor's degree in education or human services and they have to have, you know, a certain number of years working with kids. And then there's also physical site requirements, again, really the emphasis on safety. And the sort of benefit to us with starting on a school-based site is a lot of those regulations are sort of waived because if it's a school, it already meets the requirements. So that's sort of another reason why we thought, why we thought West Reading would be a great place to start. There's also, again, very specific child-staff ratio requirements. I think for school-aged kids, it's, you know, 1 to 12 or 1 to 15. And there's a real focus on making sure that we have emergency operations, manuals and policies in place, again, the real focus being on safety. And I think what's, so we're not the first Boys and Girls Club to explore this model. And we're finding that there's a lot of other clubs across the country that are going this route because of the sustainability factor. There is, in West Reading, Pennsylvania, the Boys and Girls Club there has been very successful with opening licensed centers. We're also finding that the Boys and Girls Club of America, you know, they have membership requirements that we have to meet as a club and they've had a large focus on safety in recent years. So a lot of the things that Boys and Girls Club is mandating align really nicely with what licensing mandates. And then what will happen is when we first become certified, we would get designated as a Star One Center. And as we sort of progress, as some of our staff go through additional professional development, we can get up to a Star Four. And what that really means is that's the way that we showed like, listen, we are a high-quality center, you know, please send your children here. And I'm happy, if you have any questions, please interrupt me. Happy to take them. So once we become licensed, this goes back to sustainability, is it creates an opportunity for us to develop a market rate for after-school and summer programming based on what other centers in the area are charging for the same services that we would be charging. So as an example, the Y operates out of Y in St. Hill's Elementary Center and they run an after-school program as a licensed center. And their part-time rate for after-school care is $90 a week. And then listed below, there are other centers that provide after-school care in the local area and what they charge on a weekly basis. And what I find is, the reason why, my assumption is for the other sites, that they're a little bit higher than the Y is, I know, for example, kinder care, you know, they do transportation, pickup, you know, from the school to the center. So I think when you see those higher rates, it's because of things like that, transportation and maybe some other services that are offered. So what we would consider doing once we become licensed is basically changing our rate structure at West Reading. So we would be changing from, you know, the $25 for the school year or the $50 a week to something that's more competitive with these rates listed here. Next slide. Thank you. And then just to go back to this slide I had before, where I presented the revenue for a typical, a historical school year at West Reading, where we're maybe expecting for a given school year about $1,200 to come in through program fees. If we were to switch, switch our model and create a market rate of, let's say, 120 a week and we base that on 20 kids on average attending, we could, the potential for revenue is up to $76,000. So you can begin to see through this model that it's going to help us cover more of our expenses to run the program. Now, I also recognize that that is compared to what we were charging, to go to this rate would come at a huge sticker shock to our families. But what happens when we become licensed is it opens up another program opportunity called Childcare Works that would help to subsidize the costs for families that are low-income. So that's, I think, the next slide here. So once we become licensed, there is a federal program called Childcare Works, which essentially the goal is to subsidize the cost of childcare for families that need it. And so qualified families would be eligible to receive childcare subsidies. And so it's, what, families would apply through the COMPASS system, so where they apply for food stamps and other benefits, it's sort of a similar application process. So there are income guidelines and there's also a demonstrated need for childcare. So both parents or head of household have to either be working or in an education program so that there's a need for childcare. And then what happens based on the application process is that if families are eligible, they would establish a weekly co-pay for the family. So the family would pay a portion of the childcare cost, you know, based on income and family size, and then the remaining, the remaining portion of the market rate would come from the Early Learning Resource Center to us. And then both the subsidy payment and the family co-pay would both come to all of the Boys and Girls Club through this program. So these are just some example scenarios that we thought would be helpful to talk through because this would be a change on our, on our fee structure, it would be a change for our families. So the top table there are our income guidelines. So based on the family size and the max annual income, that would essentially be, if a family is eligible, the weekly co-pay for childcare. And in talking with the Early Learning Resource Center, the point of clarity that they provided me is that that, that co-pay, the weekly co-pay, does not change based on the number of kids. So for example, if you have a family size of three and two of those household members are kids, the $60 would cover both of those kids. So the co-pay amount doesn't change based on the number of kids in the family. And then I just included some other examples on the bottom table. So if you have a family of two with an income of $35,000, based on a market rate that we would establish of $120 a week, the weekly co-pay that the family would have to pay would be $41. And then the $79, so the remaining portion of that market rate would come from the Early Learning Resource Center. So essentially, the families that qualify would never pay that $120 a week. This program would help to subsidize the cost and they would pay a portion of it to us. And then the table on the right, I took some data from our revision system, which holds all of our members' information. And we do ask when families fill out the membership application what their, you know, family size is and what their, what their income is. And so I have here just the, when we look at our families that were enrolled during the summer and the school year, sort of where they fell in the different income levels. And you can see that a majority of the families, close to, I would say, 80% in both the summer and school year, are, you know, falling below, you know, the $50,000 mark. What we, what we don't know yet is how many families, you know, are, what their working situation is. So that's sort of the other piece of the puzzle is, you know, are both parents working? Is there that need for childcare that would make them eligible? Thank you. So we certainly recognize that this would be a change for our families. And we also recognize that there may be families that for whatever reason don't qualify for, through the Childcare Works program. So how do we support those families? And, you know, our commitment, as Chris mentioned in the beginning, is that we're going to stay true to our mission and we're going to make sure that no one is turned away because of the cost of the program, regardless of what it is. And so we think what's really important in this process is early and ongoing communication with our families. Jamie, I think, has a really great relationship with all the families and I think it's really important that we meet with them early to explain not only what we're doing, but why we're doing it and really get a sense of each of the individual situations. I think it's also important that we really help our families through the application process for the Childcare Works program. There is, you know, you have to submit paperwork, there's an application, and I recognize that can be a barrier in kind for some families. So in talking, you know, with Dr. Bab and Mr. Scavoria, they're very supportive of helping us, you know, hold a family night. We would bring a representative from the Early Learning Resource Center, we'd have tablets available to really walk families through the application process with them. And again, we would also create a financial support structure for families, let's say, that don't qualify through Childcare Works, but they can't afford the market rate. We would come up with an internal system to support them. So if their income is X, they're not eligible for Childcare Works, okay, you won't pay $120 a week, this is why I don't pay on a weekly basis. And I think it's really important that we do that. Next slide. And just to come back to, you know, the why, because, you know, this is a change. Really, the goal of this is to create a sustainable program so that we can continue to provide this program here, potentially serve more youth, and potentially, you know, expand to other parts of the city and county that need us. And again, I think what's, what's nice about licensing is because there's such a focus on safety and such a focus on professional development, that we're going to create a safer, a safer and more quality program for the kids that are involved. And as I mentioned before, it's, this program will also help us create, through the Childcare Works program, more of a structured and sustainable financial support system for families that qualify. Thank you for listening. Happy to have you taking questions.
Did you say this was the pilot of licensing?
For, for us. We, yeah, this is the first, this would be the first site that we've ever done this.
Okay. That's in the inner workings of the Olives, but I guess my question is not why, but is are you going to expand that? Because I mean, it seems especially if you get subsidies from the, from the state.
Yes, we'd like to. I think some of the challenges for us is, you know, given that we're, that we're such an old organization, is a lot of our buildings need some significant repairs, so we've been.
Do we qualify?
Yes. Yeah. So that's been, I think, one of the challenge is if we were to do it at another site, we'd have to, you know, really invest in some infrastructure repairs.
Neil, thank you very much, first of all. Very great program and I know we really appreciate it and hope it does continue for a long, long time. Question regards to the funding, obviously, we're looking at families that they all of a sudden go to $200 a month, even with the co-pay. And several of these families, as you said, probably have the block at that, the fact that you're one-on-one and you're going to make sure that doesn't happen. Is your belief that possibly the only increase in revenue you're really going to get is what the state's going to provide? I mean, that's substantial, but I mean, realistically looking at this, it may be really just not a, okay, the co-pay part's not really going to increase revenue for you, it's really just revenue that's going to increase from state funding. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be, probably that would be a really good way to put it. It creates that stability for us, so it doesn't put a burden on, not only on the families, but also for us to come to the district and as the district, we can do this ourselves by doing it such a way that we develop not only a system using the subsidies, but then we're also going to develop a system that allows us to, we just changed the terminology, but we're going to be able to offer financial assistance. So say you're the family, as she described, that does not qualify for CCW but wants their child in the program, but that they are struggling to figure out how they're going to pay. We want to develop a financial assistance system, kind of on the model that we saw from our friends in Western Pennsylvania, the Boys and Girls Club out there, that allows us to basically help those families. And that's the model of making sure that no child is turned away from an Olive if he wants to be an Olive kid. Because the answer here is we're trying to create a sustainable model that long-term gives us the ability to serve more kids efficiently and effectively.
I mean, I can only assume the shortcoming of income stream is probably even worse at other buildings. I can only thank you for everything that goes, because I mean, to show the red, if you will, of what's happening in West Reading and between all the buildings, I can only mention, so thank you very much.
Thank you too for us, you know, we, you know, our staff, like Jamie and our other directors, we also want to, you know, we want to give them raises, we want to pay them, you know, for the hard work that they're doing and we want to retain them because they're really the ones that are, you know, doing the hard work on the ground with the kids. So I think that's the other, this provides a great pathway for that, too.
Should we get some infrastructure grants for your other buildings?
Yeah, we're trying.
We're trying. We're trying.
I don't want to cut off any questions, so if there's any questions, I was just going to ask if, if the board is okay with you exploring this, what would be the timeline? Would you be looking to gather the families or get some information now, transition around January? I knew you mentioned in the meeting with me, what were you hoping to do if, if the district is okay kind of putting this model out?
So we would, we would like to look at putting this in place starting January 1st because that will match our fiscal, you know, yearly, annual guidelines. And that would be, that would enable us to not only budget for next year accordingly based on what we anticipate as revenue coming in, but it also gives us the ability to learn as we go and make adjustments as we go through this process. It gives us time to meet the families over the next couple of months, one-on-one. It gives us the time to bring in the Child Learning Center, to meet with the families and see those who qualify because, by the way, Rob, they literally will be able to know the minute they apply on the tablet whether or not they qualify. They'll know what their co-pay is, they'll know, they'll know everything right there and then. And then we can then look at our sliding model that we're developing in-house on how we're going, we can offer financial assistance in other ways. And I mean, that gives us a little more time to give it. But we would be, if the district was willing to allow us to do this, we would like to start it in January 1st.
I know Dr. Bab and I are certainly willing if there's a family night or an information night or a couple. We also spoke about that, you know, maybe we could talk with some of our staff members, you know, that might know the students as well, whether that be a counselor or anyone else available to have more hands, you know, on a family night to be able to kind of sit and help, help the families access. Sorry to point to the back of the room, but we thought some tech support would also be good in the room. We have some great folks in our tech department. So if there was a family night, we would really want to make it that all the families can come in and get assistance and get answers like Mr. Winter said and kind of be served and be spoken to and have some recognizable faces on maybe both sides, on the school side and then also on the Olive side. So that's as far as we got in our meeting and then wanted to certainly see what the board's, you know, questions are. Certainly this is a change. When this came in, we, this was kind of new, so I thank the board and all of it for, you know, we were one of the newer sites. They had certainly been in the outside of the city before, but I believe we were the first Parks County school-based site. So we were trying something new from the beginning with this and we were amazed the first couple of years because we knew, we didn't know those numbers that Kathy put up there, but, you know, we know the numbers of staffing and we were amazed the first couple of years that you're able to do so much. And so when we were approached by Olive, you know, we kind of knew at some point this might be a reality that it's almost impossible to staff a program, you know, like that and then just rely on grants and donations. We'd love to continue what we were doing, but so when Olive approached us, it seemed to make sense and can we find a way to, you know, protect the program long-term and knowing there might be some ups and downs with our families as we try to work through this. But hopefully in the end, our families continue to, you know, want the service, find that, you know, point of Olive support and state support that, you know, sustains the program. So that's really where we were. We haven't done anything else with this, but we wanted to kind of bring it to the board and see what else we could do to either answer any questions or keep you updated. If you are okay with, you know, kind of engaging in the process, we could certainly come back and share updates with the board on, you know, the reactions of our families, the numbers, where, you know, families qualify in terms of, you know, what levels of support. So we could certainly do anything the board would like if you're okay trying to continue this.
Dr. Bab, did you have any concerns or anything you thought we should know that we haven't already heard?
No, I think it's been spelled out really well for you. I would just emphasize again, it's just been a very positive experience with Olive over these three years. And, you know, we've topped out the list every, around 40, 50 kids signing up and it's, you know, I'm in around every day and it's, it's at least 20 kids that are staying in after-school regularly. So it's been well utilized by just our fifth and sixth graders and a couple fourth graders sprinting.
So I actually have a question. So if you have kids that are just, like you said, 40 to 45 are registered, but 20 to 25 come, how do you charge on a weekly basis then for kids who are showing up on Monday or Friday? Like, how does that work? Are they paying in advance for the month, whether they come or not? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, we'd have to, I think, figure that out with the Early Learning Resource Center. Like, I know, just from being a mom and having Like, I know, just from being a mom and having kids in daycare, I, I pay for the future week. So I think we have to figure out, like, what the payment structure would look like.
And just as a note, I know I put this in the board packet, but we put it in that board packet. So when we were approached, the example we have is that the Reading YMCA does use this funding model for our program at the Hills. So I did speak with their director, I know the Olivetts team, you know, did as well, just to help with my learning. And they have about two, two and a half hours after school. Olivetts offering about four hours after school. Again, some families take advantage of all of it, and some just take advantage of a portion. You saw the rates, Reading Y charges 90 a week for that after-school, whether you come the full week or not. And he didn't have numbers on how many families take advantage of the state's support, so I might try to follow back up with him and see. He was going to speak with his team. He said it is available, certainly they provide the forms. You know, I don't know the level of outreach that, you know, I certainly don't want to say that, but I know Olivetts is talking about one-on-one outreach and a family night and sitting down with them. Because I think what we've experienced here in the school, like with our free reduced lunch program, is we have families who qualify that struggle to fill out perhaps the paperwork for whatever reason, and whether it's a personal choice or just not familiar with the paperwork or busy. So I think that part would be really important to make sure that we help the families, you know, become aware and fill, kind of fill it out with them, you know, and help, you know. So the comparison we have is the Reading Y program, so it's a little different age group, so there would be questions about, you know, how this ultimately impacted the program or not, but it is very comparable to what we do with Reading Y.
Well, I can't thank you enough for what you're doing over there, for being our partner, for giving us your time tonight. We wish you all the best with this. And I would just ask, would you keep us up? You know, what worries me about this population is with fifth and sixth graders, as I'm sure you are too. I'm aware that the choice would just be to stay at home alone. You know, I think you can't leave your eight-year-old at home, but then this is a different population, and that's what really worries me. So would you keep us apprised, particularly how many kids that are participating now that look like they're going to be lost? You know, that are not going to choose to participate because of however the numbers worked out? I think that would be really important for us to know because with our focus on children's mental health and our students' mental health, this program so aligns to that, that goal of ours and, you know, readiness for, for the junior, senior high school transition in so many ways. So could you please let us, you know, like, once you hammer it all out, would you report back to us and let us know who's, who's getting lost and anybody is among?
Absolutely. And I mean, and to your point is, we are very concerned about the mental health as well, and that's what, part of what our value add and benefit of Olivetts is, the fact that the mental health is a component of what we're serving, your children in our program. You know, we also make sure they are getting more meals every night and they're provided dinner every night before they leave, as well as snacks. But it's also the mentoring side of things and everything else. So there's all this, we're not necessarily a daycare, we really are putting value added for benefits to it. And the mental health is, Chairwoman, I assure you, is, is something that the three of us are greatly concerned about.
Yeah, and, you know, I think when, clearly you're creating community, and that's the foundation of creating wellness for kids, so that's what we want to help you guys support too.
Thank you.
I do have one question. When we started talking about this three years ago, four years ago, we had said that we were just going to do fifth and sixth grade. Why are the parameters now, is it fourth through seven, or?
So I'll, I'll check with Dr. Babb. I know over the last couple of years, we've spoken about perhaps some fourth graders, younger siblings, particularly of kids in the program. I don't think we've gone into the seventh, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, if we've gone into the older students.
It remains that, the numbers on that list are fifth and sixth graders, and then we do allow siblings that are in fourth grade of current fifth and sixth grade students to also come over. I, I know last year we had, you know, maybe two or three of those fourth graders. I'm, to be honest, not sure if or how many we have issued of the fourth graders.
Busing is pretty, busing's pretty easy. We can accommodate, give the family busing from the Hills over, we just have to coordinate it. I think, you know, being somewhat new, being in the school system, we've kind of stayed away a little bit from the older children coming back, although many of them are alumni and, you know, they come back occasionally on the playground portion to visit. Because the playground portion, we also have kids out on the playground who are not just in the Olivetts program. So they can come back and be part of that, but we haven't kind of brought the older students in just for a number of reasons, figuring this, this middle group was our target group, and to keep everything safe and, you know, good supervision and appropriate for staffing. We've spoken about it a little bit, but we've kind of geared more towards the fourth grade. So we could talk more about that.
Anybody else? Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one, one last item on the objectives of the PSBA delegates, and this is an annual item that the board does each year. And you can see from the chart that while there are four, let's call them erasings, it's really, they're not opposed. We did provide, I think, according to Ms. Pivot, there's a link that we provided you with background, that if you want to. And basically, what Ms. Pivot says, there's two choices. If the board is generally okay to support the candidates, then it would appear on an upcoming agenda, kind of as a group. If we want abstaining for any reason, we would almost indicate that ahead. And then Ms. Pivot would kind of take that to help us, you know, work through the next portion of that, which is kind of the formal voting. But, you know, we looked at it, I'm not familiar with any of the candidates, but it does look like that they're, they're all running unopposed for their offices. So the board's in favor, generally of support, we'll structure the vote for you in an upcoming meeting. And certainly, if there's questions between now and the next meeting, you can, you know, let me know if you have, want to go on and look at any of the candidates and learn more about them on the PSBA site.
Anybody have any problems with voting for the positions that are suggested next time that Ms. Pivot puts them on the agenda? Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor now?
Aye.
Posed me. Do we adjourn?